Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the first policy committee meeting on this Tuesday, September the ninth, 2025. A few housekeeping items before we begin. So just to remind you that this meeting is being recorded on Teams and the recording will be posted on the HCDSP's website. For all meeting participants, please use the raise hand function in Teams when you would like to speak. For the boardroom participants, you no longer use the microphone stations in front of you. Instead, the new overhead microphone system will automatically project your voice whenever you speak during this meeting. Unless prompted by myself, please refrain from speaking when it is not your turn to speak. And if participating via Teams, keep your microphone muted and camera off when not speaking. At this point, I kindly request that the land acknowledgement be played.
Holton, as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations in the Maytee.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Maytee.
These lands surround me greatly.
Are steeped in Indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty lands.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our Indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honor and respect.
The four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
The acknowledged thank.
The Mississaugas of the credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you. Let us now begin our meeting with an opening prayer by trustee Agnew.
Uh oh. Sorry. Need to call one for you. Yeah, yeah, you. Okay, if you will join me, the son of our faith, the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Heavenly Father, as we gather for this meeting, unite our hearts and minds in common purpose. Grant us the wisdom to work together effectively and the humility to value each person's perspective. Guide our discussions and decisions that they may honor you and serve our shared goals. In Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. We will move into item two, which is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, may I please have a mover to approve? Trustee Agnew, thank you very much. May I have a seconder? Trustee Dwork, thank you. All in favor, or are there anyone opposed? Is anyone opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries and the agenda is considered approved. Moving on to item number three of our agenda this evening, declarations. Any conflict of interest to declare this evening? Seeing none. Item number four, which is entitled delegations. We do not have any delegations this evening. Moving into item number five, entitled approval of the minutes. Are there any errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes of the June 10, 2025 policy meeting? Seeing none. May I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 13, 2025 policy committee meeting? I'm looking for a mover. Trustee Dwork, thank you very much. May I have a seconder?
I can second.
Trustee Carabella. All in favor, or is anyone opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes and the minutes are considered approved. We are now moving on to item number six, entitled action items. We're going to move to item 6.1. The first action item on our agenda is policy I-19 Occupational Health and Safety. Trustees, could I please have someone move that the policy committee recommends that policy I-19 Occupational Health and Safety be forwarded to the September 16, 2025 regular board meeting for approval? May I please have a mover? Trustee Dwork, looking for a seconder? Trustee Agnew, thank you. Superintendent Bakai, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Welcome back trustees to a new policy year. Policy I-19 Occupational Health and Safety is reviewed and where necessary, revised annually. The Superintendent of Human Resource Services and the appropriate staff reviewed the policy. Amendments have been made to the purpose, principles, and requirements to reflect current and relevant language, and minor housekeeping changes have been made throughout. Happy to answer any questions trustees may have.
Thank you. Trustees, I will now open the floor if there are any questions. Trustee Carabella.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So under requirements in the third bullet, there's an addition. All workers and employees are required to commit to reducing the risk of injury and illness. So of course, I understand this, but how are they actually being required? And what does that look like?
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Through the director to Superintendent Bakai.
Thank you for the question, trustee Carabella. I can start and perhaps may yield to Superintendent Merrick. That bullet information was moved from under the purpose, trustee Carabella, so it isn't new information. There are processes in place in terms of the training that we do at the beginning of the school year and throughout the school year as required. And requirements through review of the occupational health and safety documents, the associated policies and procedures, many of which are in the policy, under associated policies and procedures. And so there is a general understanding by all of the requirement, and it's echoed through the training.
Thank you, Superintendent Bakai. Follow up, trustee Carabella?
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, I do not see any other questions on the floor, so at that point, this point, we'll now take it to a recorded vote of the main motion. So trustee Agnew? In favor? Thank you. Trustee Dwork?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee Evelyn?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee Hannah? Thank you. And trustee Perishram?
In favor.
Thank you. And I'm also in favor, so all in favor, which means the policy passes and will be brought forward to the September 16, 2025 meeting. Thank you, everyone. Okay, moving on to item 6.2. The next action item on our agenda is policy I-47 Information Security. Trustees, can I please have someone move that the policy committee recommends that policy I-47 Information Security be forwarded to the September 16, 2025 regular board meeting for approval? Looking for a mover?
I can move it, not on the chair.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Looking for me if you have a seconder?
Powell.
Thank you, trustee Powell. Privacy Officer Mark Gresik, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The policy I-47 Information Security, we reviewed it as part of the regular policy review cycle. The references and definitions have been updated. We've updated the requirements with clarifying language and expectations, and we performed some minor housekeeping changes throughout the policy document. And with that, I will open it up to any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Gresik. Trustees, I'll now open the floor if anyone has any questions. Okay, I do not see any at the time, at this moment, so now I will take this to a recorded vote of the main motion. Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Dwork?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Adley?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee Hannah?
In favor.
Trustee Perishram?
In favor.
Thank you very much, and I am also in favor. The policy, this policy passes and will be brought forward to the September 16, 2025 regular board. Thank you. Moving on to item 6.3 on the agenda this evening. The next action item on our agenda is policy II-11 Daily Teacher Plans. Trustees, could I please have someone move that the policy committee recommends that policy II-11 Daily Teacher Plans be forwarded to the September 16, 2025 regular board meeting for approval? Looking for a mover? Trustee Dwork?
I can second, Madam Chair.
Thank you for seconding, trustee Agnew. Superintendent Kroll, you now have the floor.
Good evening, trustees. Through you, Madam Chair, please read that policy, Q-11 amendments or review. I'll be mindful to designate who perverts to align your strategic plan and a few minor housekeeping changes throughout. Happy to answer any questions that trustees may have.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Kroll. Trustees, I will now open the floor to any questions anyone may have. Trustee Murphy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've just noticed there's no related procedures, so what are the specific, what does a lesson plan look like, or daily plan, and what kind of guidance do teachers have?
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Through Director Klein to Superintendent Kroll.
Sure. This is one of our old policies, one that's been around for a long time. It is rooted largely in education, academic, and growing success. So, find out, most of the language there is actually language that comes from ministry documents. With regards to what teachers are expected with regards to their own lesson plans, we do provide templates for both unit plans and for daily plans that teachers can use. Teachers also use their own professional judgment, however. If a principal was doing an evaluation on a teacher, or if a principal wanted to see that, the principal wouldn't necessarily require them to use a specific template, but there would certainly be look for us that the principal or the administrator would be sort of reviewing, the staff member, to make sure that they're using the appropriate curriculum documents, maybe show that their Ontario Catholic graduate expectations are included, the board focus on theme themes, et cetera. So again, we have templates that teachers can use, but they also have the ability to use their own professional judgment.
Thank you, Superintendent Kroll. Trustee Murphy, do you have a phone?
So just to follow up. Would it be a good idea to, like, if a teacher is looking this up, how would they access the template, you know, from this document?
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Through you to Superintendent Kroll?
Yeah, it would be that this is a public facing document. On our board internal website, there's lots of curriculum resources that teachers can access, if they were looking for something specific. And we spend a lot of time through our staff to make sure that staff know what's available. We have a new teacher induction program, which is also funded by the ministry, and one of the intentions of that plan is to make sure that teachers, when they enter our board, know what resource we have in place.
Thank you, Superintendent Kroll. Okay. I don't see any other hands up at this time, so if not, I will take this now to a recorded vote of the main motion for item 6.3, policy II-11. Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy? Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Dwork?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Adley?
In favor.
Trustee Hannah?
In favor.
Trustee Perishram?
In favor.
I am also in favor. Everyone's in favor. That passes. The policy will be brought forward to the September 16, 2025 regular board meeting for approval. Okay, moving on to 6.4. The next action item on our agenda is policy III-15 Workplace Violence. Trustees, at this point, I need someone to please move that the policy committee recommends that policy III-15 Workplace Violence be forwarded to the September 16, 2025 regular board meeting for approval. I am looking for a mover.
Triple I-16, right?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Sixteen.
Triple I-15. So we're clear that it is triple I-15, everyone? Yeah, it is. Okay, it's on the screen. Okay, perfect. So looking for someone, may I please get a mover so we can discuss this policy? Trustee Kelly?
I can move it. Powell.
Trustee Powell will second it. Superintendent Bakai, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Again, this is one of our policies that is reviewed annually as required legislation and revised where required. The Superintendent of Human Resources Services and appropriate HRS staff did review the policy. The Associated Policies and Procedures section has been updated and requirements have been updated to provide clarifying language and expectations, and minor housekeeping changes have been made throughout. Happy to answer any questions that trustees may have.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Bakai. Moving on to the trustees now, I will now open the floor if anyone has any questions, clarifying, or any other kind of questions. Trustee Saunders?
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair. I'm just wondering, with artificial intelligence, are we developing a broader policy just on, you know, will it be introduced into the schools? Will we be teaching courses on how it can work with the students' sentence learning, sort of where we're headed with that?
Thank you, trustee Saunders. Through the director to Superintendent Bakai, George, Director Klein.
Start with the director. It's a good question. So our board is part of a network of other boards, probably about 20 to 30 boards in the province of Ontario that are on there, also connecting with other boards within Canada and beyond, because that is a priority. First of all, it's a priority now of the province. The minister has identified that as one of the priorities in terms of professional development, for one. We hear from others as well. Trustee Saunders said that's a concern of theirs as well. The work that we're doing within this network is to do exactly that, to get a stronger sense amongst ourselves of what are the opportunities and the challenges that AI presents, to work at refining some guidelines, because when it comes to AI or anything technological, by the time the ink is wet or dry, you've got, things have changed. So guidelines that would help move the board forward in regard to its use. Within that, again, we would narrow down the goal to help teachers, students, and our parents and families in terms of, again, understanding more about it and having a sense of what the parameters are around its use in the school and outside of school. I'll go to Superintendent Kroll, because he, in terms of that committee that we have working, is one of our lead superintendents.
First, through you, Madam Chair, and we are, we now, we have internal guidelines for staff, and we've done some training for staff. It is a provincial priority this year, so one of our PAs will be dedicated to AI. And the work that we're doing now is to sort of update the guidelines and make them so that we can share them with parents, guardians, and students. So we'll be looking for input from our various stakeholders as we run those guidelines. So that's the next step. I do know that there is upcoming PD as well for trustees that'll happen, I believe, next month that our staff are preparing for.
Great, thank you. Director Klein, Superintendent Kroll?
Thank you.
Do a poll? No, we're good? Okay, perfect. Okay, I see no other questions. Trustees, I'll now take it to a recorded vote of the main motion. Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Dwork?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee Adley?
In favor.
Trustee Hannah?
In favor.
Trustee Perishram?
In favor.
I am also in favor. Everyone is in favor. So the policy passes, the policy will be brought forward to the September 16, 2025 regular board meeting for approval. Okay, moving on to the last of our action items, which is 6.5. The next action item on our agenda is policy III-16 Workplace Discrimination and Harassment. Trustees, can I please have someone move that the policy committee recommends that policy III-16 Workplace Discrimination and Harassment be forwarded to the September 16, 2025 regular board meeting for approval? So I am looking for a mover at this point. Trustee Dwork moves. Trustee Agnew, second?
Sure.
Thank you. Superintendent Bakai, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Trustees, again, this is one of our policies that is reviewed on an annual basis, and as per the Ontario Occupational Health and Safety Act, requires that employers implement specific workplace harassment policies and procedures and ensure that incidents and complaints of workplace harassment are properly investigated. And similarly, the Ontario Human Rights Code requires employers to ensure that the workplace is free from discrimination and harassment on a number of prescribed and prohibited grounds. Staff in the Human Resources Services Department did review the policy. We have updated the associated policies and procedures and references, and minor housekeeping changes have been made throughout. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Bakai. Trustees, I will now open the floor at this time if anyone has any questions or clarification. Trustee Saunders?
Yeah, just a quick question. One point is that non-HCSB employees must promptly notify the site supervisor of any incidents of violence. Is this, this anticipates for people that are uninvolved in the school, maybe just passersby, this, you know, may, something may happen that's implicated in this violence? And I'm just wondering if that is, and they are not aware that they have to report this immediately, what, do we have some sort of backup, like six months later, seven months later, they come forward and see something happened? What's the flexibility around this?
Thank you, trustee Saunders. Through Director Klein, if you need clarification on the point of the policy. Superintendent Bakai, George, Director Klein?
Yes, sir. I can start, yeah. So trustee Saunders, it's a good question. If you look under the application and scope, it tells to whom the policy applies. So it is to our employees, trustees, and other users of HCDSP facilities, which would answer your question of, you know, what others would be accountable for this policy. So ideally, what's required is that incidents are reported immediately in a timely manner. However, depending on circumstances, if the report were to come later, all reports are investigated thoroughly.
Okay, I can.
Thank you, Superintendent Bakai. Any follow-up, trustee Saunders? Great. I do not see any other questions, so at this point, we can now move forward, and I can take it to a recorded vote of the main motion. Okay, trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Dwork?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders? Thank you. Trustee Adley?
In favor.
Trustee Hannah?
In favor.
Trustee Perishram?
In favor.
I am also in favor. Everyone is in favor, so this policy does pass and will be brought forward to the September 16, 2025 regular board meeting for approval. Okay, so moving on to heading item seven, discussion items. We do have two discussion items on this evening's policy agenda. The first item is 7.1, and it's regarding policy I-04 Cross-Boundaries and Non-Resident Student School Attendance. This is being brought forward by trustee Carabella. So trustee Carabella, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I noticed, too, it wasn't really attached, so I don't know if everyone's had a chance to read it through again for tonight's purpose. I'm bringing it forward because of an event in my particular ward in Oakville, five and six, in a particular school that was open to cross boundaries, and then it was closed, and it caught many parents off guard and being notified late, and a big scramble, and also a lot of hope that maybe their kids would still get approved. So there were many that were denied the cross-boundary application, who were expecting it to go ahead. So when I, so when I, looking over this policy. Just keep talking.
Testing?
Testing? So, looking over this policy, there are some, I thought, you know, we could bring it as a discussion item so that we could either help to give it some timelines. There weren't any specific timelines, and even like how parents get notified, so they only really found out that they were denied their cross-boundary. They, it doesn't leave much time, and then they were scrambling and weren't able to participate in JK orientations that were prior to that. So it just caused a lot of distress in these families. And also, the point about having siblings in the school already, if there's, if we can look at some way to give siblings a priority to be approved, and if not, I was thinking, because if there are a few spots left, if there's, if it can't be prioritized, then it could be maybe a lottery system to fill in the few gaps, the few spaces that present themselves. So these are my ideas and what I've heard from parents. So I bring it here to the board to see if we can work on those aspects, or if anyone else has experience with this.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Trustee Saunders?
Yeah, I'd like to speak in favor of this, because I also was a recipient of dozens and dozens of calls from parents that ran into this issue, and I think some clarity around the policy, clarity around, you know, our priorities would help everyone and help avoid a lot of the acrimony that's sort of come out of this. I know we've lost a couple of students to the public board because of this, so I think some clarity would be very, very helpful.
Thank you, trustee Saunders. Trustee Dwork?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for your assistance. I'd like all trustees to think about it, about what our role here, this is policy, we're setting up a policy for the whole system. It's not just an issue that happens in a particular community or location. So our role basically is a high-level role. We need to set something which works across our system. We have, yes, then, our hands are tied in what we do, in the sense that we, at the same time, at one, in one situation, we have to maintain some numbers, classroom sizes, we have to report that to the ministry, we can't exceed those numbers. So there are a lot of things that go into the picture, which trustees do not really get involved with for details. So our role at this committee is to set a policy, and I think policies are above and beyond issues in a particular community, Madam Chair.
Thank you, trustee Dwork. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Trustee Saunders?
Yeah, I appreciate what trustee Dwork is saying, but I think we also have responsibility to the parents and the people that elect us, and the, because the parents see us as the one opportunity to make an impact with the board. So I understand we do have a policy setting position, but I think we also have a very front piece with parents, so I think we also have to remember that's also one of the reasons.
Thank you, trustee Saunders. Just be aware of our new microphone system. Trustee Carabella, you do have your hand up.
Thank you. So I think, you know, policies come to us to make them better. And then when we experience something in our community, we bring that experience to the board and bring forward ideas that can help in other areas as well. And maybe there have been issues in other areas regarding this. We don't know, but I'm bringing it forward now. I don't think, I think that the ideas I'm proposing is not threatening or a problem, just to set some dates, when a school is declared closed, how parents are notified if they're possibly cross-border, they already have siblings and they're maybe expecting, or how do we let people know? cross-border, they already have siblings and they're maybe expecting, or how do we let people know your school is now closed? And when, when do we let them know? There was also, people just need a timeline. They're very distressed trying to find childcare spacing or before-after care, school time. School, before-after school care for their children, and then it would be shifting. Parents make plans. And they were really, they felt like the rug was pulled out from under them. I think putting forward some ideas of if there are, so you're closed to cross-boundary, but then there, if there are spaces, how do we fill those spaces? Because we want to, right? Because maybe we thought they'd be full, but then there are empty spaces. And at one of our board meetings in June, we were excited that we had thirty JK elementary students. Our enrollment had gone up by thirty, and if we have opportunity to also increase on our enrollment in our Catholic schools, then there might be a way with this lottery idea, or the, you know, seniority with siblings, or how long the family has been with the school. We, we can put forward criteria that makes it, it fair for everybody. And also, another question I had here, if there's an appeal process for the denial, maybe that's in the policy, but a question here. Or a possibility of a waitlist? Because, oh, I was wondering, at some point, it, it will be cut off, but when could, if there are any spaces left open that didn't get filled with students from the area, then is there a certain date that there could still let kids come in? Those are some of my other thoughts, and I know I leave that with you.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. And I, I'm making a lot of notes, and I see staff is as well, as far as your feedback that you're providing, so thank you for that. I do see we have another hand up. Trustee Kennedy.
Thank you. Very good, Madam Chair. I didn't see the policy attached, but what, what is the policy on siblings? Like if you have siblings, grade two or three, and then there's another sibling who's now in S K, do we try to give them priority? And if we don't, we didn't this year in our cases. Why didn't we? Is it a matter of funding?
Okay, Trustee Kennedy, through Director Klein, Superintendent McKaich, who wants to take this question?
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Trustee Kennedy and, and Trustee Carabella for your questions. I can give you some of the answers. In terms of notification, we generally notify families within the month of April. Typically, we'll send our cross-boundary request for secondary because of the requirements for staffing and sections, et cetera, first. And then we look on, do we consider elementary cross-boundary requests in April, and hopefully get all of them in, and return to families by the end of April. In terms of cross-boundary requests, they do come in on an individual basis. After that time period, they'll come in throughout the course of the year. We do work at those cross-boundaries on an individual basis. And I think, Trustee Kennedy, you mentioned a lot of what we do in terms of cross-boundary requests is contingent, as you know, on number and the enrollment in, and the requirements, the minimum and maximum requirements that the ministry designates for primary, junior, intermediate classes, et cetera, and kindergarten. There is a provision in the policy that states that siblings' cross-boundary requests may be considered, and so that's true. They are considered. If there is space in a classroom at the time of request, they are granted if it's possible. So I, I do have an example whereby I did get a cross-boundary request that had multiple siblings, and I was able to, for example, approve the request for the siblings where there was space in the classroom. But once the other class was topped out and maxed out, I wasn't able to approve that. So again, we, it's very much dictated by the number that we're allowed to reach as a maximum in our classes. And I know that Superintendent Denalva has talked about this on many occasions. When it comes to specific programs such as the French immersion program, and I know that trustees in Milton would, would understand this too, we get several, several requests from parents, especially for this kindergarten sibling, to attend the same school. Unfortunately, we do max out on those numbers as well. And you mentioned about families in the community, so they do have a right to attend the school of the catchment. So we are trying to balance all the needs of all students and families. However, there is, there is a requirement that for optional programs, and when it is a closed school, so I should be really specific about that, a lot is contingent, I guess that is the issue here, is that once a school is determined closed, it is closed to cross-boundary applications for siblings or specific programs. So I think, you know, I understand about the timing, and we try and provide response to parents in as, as a timely manner as we can. And the determination whether a school is open or closed is made around, and Superintendent Merrick can clarify for me as well. It's around March, because we are looking at the registrations from families coming in around that time period. And I understand, we do post the information on the board website, whether a school is closed or open. And it does, as you know, for my trustees in Milton, all of, mostly all of our schools in Milton are closed. So we do encounter this dilemma often, when we have cross-boundary requests for closed schools, and they are siblings, especially for an optional program. So it is, it is difficult, but it's not an anomaly, and, and my concern would be especially where it comes to waitlists, et cetera. We would want to make sure that our processes and procedures are fair regardless of the community or the, or the area in the board. And as, as I've noted, we do have our policy. It does, it does make note that the director and the schools, SO, the principal, et cetera, senior management planning services will declare as required schools to be openly closed. So we are following the policy there. We do have the provision in our procedure for VI fifty-three optional French programs. Under the cross-boundary request, we're very clear about what the requirement is there for siblings. We do state that schools who are deemed closed schools on the basis of population will not accept cross-boundary siblings, French program students. And I know that trustees would be aware of the implications of complete open access to all cross-boundaries. It would have a huge impact on the footprint of our schools. I know Superintendent Merrick can explain this much better than I can, and would create pressures on the, on the plan, and also would probably lead to borders. So it is a, you know, like, I appreciate, we do look at this in a very compassionate, caring way, but we do have to pay attention to the requirements of the numbers from the ministry, but also what, what the capacity of buildings are. I don't know, Superintendent Merrick, if I missed anything, or if you wanted to add anything to it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just, I can just talk quickly about, you know, our, our planning team does their best to estimate projections for all of our schools and how many, how many students are going to be there each year, even fifteen, twenty years out. The challenge they have is that trying to predict, they, they know roughly how many houses are in the area, and maybe how many new houses are coming into the area. We're trying to predict how many kids will be in each of those houses. And then out of that, how many Catholic families will be in those houses? And how many of those kids will be Catholic? And then beyond that, even how many of those Catholic children are going to go to Catholic schools? And we start getting a, a really tough math problem to figure out exactly how many kids are going to come into our schools, and adding in certain rules where now we may have, you know, how many cross-boundaries in other areas in that neighborhood are going to want to come into our school as well? It just makes it really challenging for us to predict and, and project out how many students will be in those schools. You know, frankly, the, the, the French immersion program being kind of unlimited now, that also pulls us a bit of a curveball as well, is that now we don't know how many classrooms of French immersion are going to be in each of those schools. We're trying to gather data and, and look at how many people sign up in each of those communities and, and kind of grow that over time. But this would be another curveball for us to predict how many students are going to come into the area. And that means that we could meet situations where certain schools, like a neighboring school, might be having declining enrollment, and they, and the other ones growing, because people are moving from, from one country to another. We had this conversation at the board table probably six, seven, eight years ago. I think Helen was the only one here back then, but St. Matthews was a community that was actually in the opposite spot of this, where they're actually seeing too much growth there due to cross-boundaries and people, like, there's many cross-boundary folks who are coming in. They were coming in because they were taking up those one or two or three extra spots in each classroom. It happened year after year after year. And they got into a spot where we were putting portables in there. We should have looked at, you know, we're getting very close to site capacity. We have to move programs out of St. Matthews to allow the regular English track kids in that school to, to stay in that school. So, I mean, it, it can swing the other way as well, where we actually have too many students at a school then, and then we're really in a tough spot, or, you know, who, who do we remove from that school then? So that's, that's kind of what we're trying to guard against here, and keep, you know, the enrollments and the, and the projections all within kind of the, the bricks and mortar portion of the school, and not get too far into portables, and also not, you know, get too far into having surplus classrooms in our schools as well.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. Any follow-up? Very good explanation. Say thank you to the Madam McKaich. Sounds like you live that life. Yes, thank you.
Sorry, my technology is down. But I do have my hand up if there's no one else who has that hand up.
Trustee Duarte does have his hand up, and then Trustee Saunders.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as Superintendent McKaich said, we have challenges that Melton and it's ongoing, it's all been there for the past couple of years. And Trustee Carabella has brought some very good points, which to, I think, now I'm understanding a little better that we need to bring clarity to parents, parents to automatically understand by looking at a document. Is that, that's what I'm understanding. Look at a document, you understand everything, you don't, there's no subjectivity there. So I'm just wondering whether this could be part of a procedure? Because this is really, we're getting into the nitty-gritty and details. It really is not part of the policy at the high level. So if that's something that staff can look into and add some more details into when, when a school is closed, when it's not closed, when parents can apply, when, when they're not allowed to apply, and some details like that, that would be great.
Thank you, Trustee Duarte. And I think Director Klein's staff, I think, as I said, they're receiving feedback as you're, as you're giving it to them. And then to take a look and maybe digest it and make changes to procedures, usually fit.
Absolutely.
I still have Trustee Saunders and Trustee Kennedy's hands up. Trustee Kennedy?
Some question. So the school is not closed, and we are not accepting requests. What would be the reason we wouldn't accept? Like, it's not closed, but we don't know. I'm specifically focusing on siblings. And so we have a parent with two children in one school, a new six-year-old. Very difficult for them to move between two schools. So if the school isn't closed, would any of those ever be done?
Thank you, Trustee.
Why would they?
Kennedy, through you, Director Klein, to Superintendent McKaich.
That's a good question. So if, if a school is designated as open, we do review cross-boundary requests. The only thing that would limit the approval would be the actual number of students already existing in the class. So for an example, if a pri, it's a primary class, and there is a cap of twenty students, we would not be able to accept a cross-boundary request to that class.
Could we if we opened a new class?
Theoretically, we could. It would mean though creating more staffing.
Right.
And so cross-boundary requests cannot force new staff.
Thank you, Superintendent McKaich.
So it's like.
Financial reasons.
It was described by me by the financial reasons specifically.
Hiring of additional staff.
So it's a why can't be, because there's no funding?
Yeah, I'm going to probably throw that to Superintendent Lofts.
I, I guess the question is, this is no funding. Yeah, we're funded for a certain number, and then every time we add something like this, it's additional cost to the system. Or really something that we've already provided a service for, that already provided a opportunity in the regular catchment. I'm assuming you're asking of schools, though, just that are open still, right?
Yeah, open.
Yeah, open schools. And again, they're really, and I, I'm going to look over to you just to maybe, really, I don't think there's too many times where we don't, when the school's open, we don't allow it. Is there, is there times?
So it, I, I mean, I can speak generally, because each superintendent has their own cross-boundary requests that come to them specific to their family's schools. It would be contingent on the number of students existing in the class. And each, each division, as you know, I know Superintendent Denalva has reviewed this a number of times. Kindergarten has a cap, primary grades have a cap, and SO one junior intermediate. So it is possible, Trustee Kennedy, that we would approve the cross-boundary as long as there's room in the class and the grade.
So shouldn't it, okay, thank you, through Madam Chair. So shouldn't it just be, if, if there's room, shouldn't it just be automatic? Like, instead of possible, like, especially if it's a sibling situation, if we have twenty and we have eighteen in there. There's two siblings. Instead of it being possible, would it not just be automatically, yes, we will, we have two spaces, we will, we'll let you in?
In most cases, but I can't, I can't say categorically. We review them on an individual case, and, yeah. I mean, by and large, Trustee Kennedy, yes, because we're, our goal is to accept everyone and make everyone happy. But we know that we are, we do have strengths, we do have limitations of what we can do.
Thank you, Superintendent McKaich. I still see, Trustee Saunders.
Yes, just a quick question, Madam Chair, Superintendent McKaich. What's the deadline date for families to apply for before and after-school care for the, for the next year? Is it May? Yeah.
So, Trustee Saunders, is this crap, sorry, should we?
Well, the issue is, is, is I, the, the issue that I, that I'm hearing is that this date is happening before they know the school's closed. So I'm just trying to find out what's the relationship of these dates. Are they the same time? Is, is one well before the other? Because I think that would probably help, particularly in, in this situation where if, if the notice of closed school could have been sometime before the deadline for applying for back-to-school care. So I'm just wondering, what are the dates?
Thank you, Trustee. I think he's talking about maybe a domino effect.
I can yield to Superintendent Kroll, he may have some.
Superintendent Merrick, I'm not, is it me?
Thanks, May, everyone's usually the, so they target, so, okay. We'll take the application doc with that, but that's usually when we're looking to see it in.
And then when's the date that we, that the kid is cool?
Cross-boundaries, yeah. You usually make the decision as a senior team. It's usually in March, and then we communicate it there in, in April. So we're posted on our website in April. And I, I'll look at the website too, like, right where you grab the cross-boundary application, right above it is the list of open and closed schools. But usually goes up in, in sometime in April, after we discuss what there's.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. Trustee Saunders.
Saunders, thanks.
Okay. Trustee Carabella.
Thank you. So, so if there are a lot of spaces, so let's say it was predicted that it would be full, but then the classes aren't full. There's, you know, a class of thirteen or a class of twenty-three, the cap is thirty-one for JK, is it? And then, so there's a lot of opportunity for allowing students in. Would that be a case where those students could be brought in through a lottery, or are we just going to leave those spaces unfilled?
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. Clarification of that question. So the school was open, deemed to open.
Closed.
Oh, deemed closed. But there was empty seats in that particular classroom?
Or more space.
Superintendent Merrick?
Yeah, I, I can maybe stop or something. It, it does still, it, it would still affect, even if you perceive that there's open spaces in there, over time, it will still affect the total capacity of the school. You think about like kindergarten, you know, we, when we go over fifteen students, and at kindergarten, we had an easy, to add, to get your staff in there. When we go over thirty, we can't pierce over thirty then. But when they go to grade one, the cap comes back to twenty-nine. And then when they go to grade four, it's a different cap then as well. So it, it's not just about that immediate class. And that's actually what happened at St. Matthews years ago, is that it was, we were filling in the ones and twos here and there in these classes. And then as the students progressed through the grades, the caps actually changed. We actually get to a spot where we had way more classes than we actually had physical classrooms in the school. Had to look at, you know, other things like adding portables, and even beyond portables. We could get in situations too where we have like boundaries to use there as well, and nobody, nobody likes boundaries, they're a lot of work. You know, somebody ends up with an option that they didn't like, so it, it just creates some contentious situations in the schools when we're going kind of over capacity at, at any school.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. Trustee Kennedy.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to, to maybe see that if it's so, actually the non-open schools, if there is, if there's siblings, if you may. I know it sounds like if they're not allowed, it sounds like it's a. if there is, if there's siblings, maybe. I know it sounds like if they're not allowed, it sounds like it's a funding issue, like the class might be capped out. Um, I just, you know, with student achievement and all being, I like to, I think we've great to kind of families being together, but they, you know, I think we meet those people that way. And we don't want to be in that situation. And we make these decisions every year with the budget. This past budget, we actually hired non-teaching, non, um, non-teaching staff. So we have the ability to hire staff if we want to, and we prioritize that. And I'd like to see the priority one, uh, if we get those requests in April, as we said, and we do our budget in June, we'll probably have a pretty good idea if we have to open up another classroom, which might be another teacher. I like that to take a focus over maybe um board staff. Thanks.
Thank you for that, thank you, Kennedy. Any response? Thank you. Trustee Carabella?
I know it's a discussion item, but just to close, then if it could be maybe the dates looked at more clarity in, in how parents know, because although it's posted on the website, nobody will know to go there unless it affects them, right? Um, they was, or the things we've talked about here. It can go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. So Director Klein and staff, that's the voice of some of our parents you just heard right there. Okay, so we're going to move on uh to discussion item seven point two, which Janet O'Hearn Chernotta, individual, that's me. Um, so I just wanted to bring it up for discussion. I want to bring it back in front of all of us again. Um, so I'm going to go through the discussion report. This is about our policy triple I dash eleven, hiring promotion policy, academic and non-academic personnel, the role of trustees in the hiring process of supervisory officers. So believe it or not, before the end of the year, I was thinking about bringing this up anyways. Um, but really what I want to do is, we've just gone through mandatory training. I've been through training for two terms as a trustee, the role of governance, and we hire the Director of Education. So I really want to bring it up for digestion, that really the Director of Education should be the one to create the committee and hire their supervisory officers that reports directly to our Director, Director Klein, who then in turn is our only really employee working with the Chair of the Board. So you know, one of the lines here is, as the Director of Education is responsible for managing all facets of school board operations, it is recommended the hiring committee for supervisor officers be comprised of only the Director of Education, the Superintendent of Human Resources Services, and senior staff to the board. So I would like to bring it in front of everyone here tonight, and I'd like to hear comments, questions, concerns, to kind of get a feel of if we want to digest this type of change to a policy. So, Trustee Kennedy?
Sorry, that's from last time.
With clarification, which bullet point is it that you just read?
Oh, sorry, the very last paragraph of the commentary. As the Director of Education is responsible for managing all facets. So it's the, I guess, second last paragraph to my, um, dissenting.
Seven point two?
Hmm, it's up on the board right now. Because there was a change. Originally, we had it, that, that the board had it, that trustees were not on it. Then it was changed that trustees were on a committee to hire supervisory officers, and I want us to kind of take a look at the board again and see if we still have that flavor or due to governance and the way we feel about some, how our Director of Education should hire, the staff should be changed. So, having said that, Trustee Parrishroom?
Um, my fellow trustees, and I would just like a bit of clarification on voting procedures. Are we allowed to abstain during voting procedures?
You can't. Right now, we're just, this is like a discussion item, so we're just having good, fulsome discussions. People are asking questions. When it's an action item, when it's an action, that's when you go to an official vote. And you absolutely can't. Uh, Trustee Saunders?
Uh, yeah, I think um in this environment, um, I think given, you know, even the comments of the, the minister, I think um one of the, the, the jobs the trustee can do is, is add oversight into uh activities of board. And I think right now it's um, you know, the, the population, the government is asking for more oversight, not less. So I would be inclined to keep the way it is, just because I think it gives us that opportunity for oversight.
Thank you for your feedback, Trustee Saunders. We must read that differently, because I completely read it the other day. And in my own mind, I completely read it differently, governing, governing with the Director. The Director um has the operations under his or her purview. So I, I, I disagree with that, but any other comments, questions? Trustee Kennedy? Uh, Carabella?
Thank you. Um, I've been involved on one of the committees of selecting a superintendent. And it's very enriching, I think, even for the role of a trustee to understand. Uh, it's very thorough and, you know, there's, I think there was six candidates at the time. There were three trustees uh that were actually randomly selected. We did a lot like a random selection, which was, I thought, very fair. Um, so that, um, you know, we are representing parents, we are representing the direction of the board. Um, the professionalism of all superintendents um selected is clear and it shows, like, everyone's wonderful. So, um, I know, I think it's a I would, I would not like to see this uh taken away from our role. Um, and I think that we also um add our relationship with the Director, that he sees us engaged in this process of hiring superintendents.
Thank you for your feedback, Trustee Carabella. I as well was on a hiring committee, um, the, the last one. And yeah, very fulsome. It's a very robust um procedure. It's a very fair procedure. I'm just really coming from the point of nose is in, fingers out, right? We govern to make sure that we're following the procedures and the policies, but we don't get right in there because we entrust that to our Director of Education. Um, next, uh, Trustee Agnew.
Uh, thank you. Thank you for bringing it forward for discussion. I'm Trustee O'Hern Zarnata, and I would echo your sentiments. Um, it's very clear through governance, through our roles, trustees, who our direct employee is, which is the Director of the Board, and, uh, you know, much alongside some of my fellow trustees, I've been involved with that hiring process the last time that we uh brought a new director on. Um, with respect to the superintendent hiring, I am of the same mind. Um, you know, those are employees of the Director. Um, I believe that he and his team are quite capable of making those decisions and establishing who the best fit is for those roles. Um, I, I think it's very clear from what everyone's perspective uh that that is a responsibility that would belong to the Director to um implement and follow through and make those decisions as best he saw fit for his team. Um, and I don't think that there's a role there for trustees with respect to those hiring practices um for all of the reasons that you outlined earlier. So I just wanted to reiterate that from my perspective.
Thank you, Trustee Agnew. Trustee Kennedy?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, obviously, direct uh superintendents are direct employees of our Director, but um, superintendents also have a lot of direct contact with trustees, whether that be school visits or projects that they're working on. And so there's a lot of emails, phone calls going back and forth. So I think there is a role for, for trustees um to at least even help them to learn more with the pool during that process. Um, I remember our Director had mentioned, there was a committee last time, wasn't fortunate to be on it, but I believe he mentioned he might be considering another committee for any super, future superintendents. I would be interested in that one day. So I would like to kind of keep the status quo. And, you know, I just don't want to govern ourselves out of a job. Um, we seem to be taking a lot away from trustees over the years and what we're hearing in the, in the media these days, you know, th- there's things happening with, with the ministry. So I would like to keep the role that we, that we have in place.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. And really, you know, all the rules are oyster. I like my metaphors, but that doesn't even mean that we come up, maybe if we don't sit on the committee, maybe as trustees, we're allowed to sit in and kind of, you know, view as if like a non-member of the committee to that governance portion to make sure policies are being followed, etc. So I offer up that to the good of the group as well. Trustee Murphy?
Thank you for your, um, just a comment that um trustees do represent the community, right, and the interests of parents and families. And I think, although I haven't quite landed on where I stand on this exactly, I do think that it's important that trustees get some sort of oversight in the chosen superintendent to ensure that they align the board's you know, vision, the MYSP and all that sort of stuff. And just I'm just, comment.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. No, feedback received. Feedback's a gift. I, I think, I think I just want to come at it from a place that, you know, we are still trustees and governing. We're the voice of the parents. We saw it earlier today in the first discussion item. Also, at the same time, Director Klein, our Director Klein, has been empowered to make these decisions. Um, he would be the one that would be doing their appraisal. So, um, and also, there's something to be said for having some sort of experience in a hiring formality, right? Having some practice, what are you looking for as far as hiring? I mean, I don't know if I could hire um our um Superintendent of HR. I don't have that type of background. So again, it's food for thought. That's why we're having the discussion and kind of everything's on the table if we want to kind of change it. Um, Trustee Powell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to, um, I just a couple of questions, actually. With our previous superintendents, like this process was, I'm trying to remember and forgive me, but um we were not a part of it, the last process for our two superintendents. I remember we were presented with their bios. We, you know, um, HR and Director Klein shared their backgrounds and we were all impressed. Is that, is that correct? We were not a part of that? Trustees didn't sit on the hiring committee?
No, I'd like to say you're correct, Trustee Powell, but no, we were on the last uh hiring committee. Uh, Trustee, I, Trustee Dwork and myself sat on that committee. It took a couple of days, I think, if I remember correctly. Um, and saw multiple candidates. Um, so we were the last time, Trustee Powell. Yeah.
That was. Um, and then the process, I mean, again, I'm not in HR, that is not my job. I don't have the background. I'm, you know, I come to the board typically, or like with my experience as a parent in our board. That's what I bring. Um, I don't bring an HR background. So I would not feel prepared to have a say in who we hire. Yes, they have to align with our MYSP, but that's what we entrust our Director. I mean, we not including, like, do we not have faith in our Director? That's, that's where I feel it lands. I feel like it lands with our Director and then um, you know, picking the best candidate and then bringing it to us. I feel like this is getting into a slippery area of operational and having a say in who we think, and then it gets, it can get messy. So personally, I would like to explore this.
Thank you, Trustee Powell. Thank you for the feedback. I see Trustee Kennedy and Trustee Murphy full. The team?
So just, so just to be clear, um, at the last two hirings, as Trustee Powell was mentioning, not all trustees were all access. But not just trustees.
Correct.
So I think which, I think that's what I heard.
Correct. The Director was able to create that committee.
Right.
Um, and then I offer up for consumption as well. I mean, if we're saying the trustee should have a role, we also have a Chair of the Board of Trustees to represent trustees, really. So maybe the Chair could sit on the committee to represent the rest of the trustees.
Uh, through you, Miss Chair, is that correct?
Very good. Well done for the first time. Well done.
Uh, so
Trustee, yeah. Yep.
I do think that this, now, I'm not qualified whatsoever to speak on this, so take what I say with a grain of salt. But I do believe that since these are uh people who are going to be working under the Director of Education, it should be natural that the Director of Education and his um committee is the one to uh choose. Now, the main issue here is the time in which this is happening. Do you have any um statements to like alleviate the concerns, especially in the current political climate? Uh, because I feel like sh- should, the main concern I'm hearing, right, is that if this were occurring at any other time, this would essentially be a no-brainer. Uh, it does make sense, but due to the current actions of the Ministry of Education, I feel like a lot of people are worried that taking away this from trustees may lead to a sort of domino effect or set a bad precedent. So do you have any like um explanation as to why, when, I, I'm sorry, again, I'm not qualified?
You're going to give us a run for our money, you guys. Good for you. Listen, I, um, this is the, it's how you perceive the word governance. So when you get in to do trustee training, I don't know how much training the student trustees have done, it talks about governance. We just all went through mandatory training. Governance is, like I said, generally, nose is in, so what's going on but fingers out? You take your fingers out of the operations of the entire board. You leave that to the Director and all of his capable staff. So regard, regardless of the current climate, I'm not even going to comment on that right now, but it's more this is what I believe it should always be. Six years ago, eight years ago, twelve years ago. That's why I'm bringing it forward for consumption of the Board of Trustees. Can I answer your question?
Good.
Thanks, Trustee Agnew. Okay, all right. Good discussion, good feedback. Um, let's move on. We're going to move on to information items. So eight point one, hang on, I'm running on script here. Eight point one to eight point two are the administrative procedures provided for your information. Now, these are already approved at the September third, twenty twenty-five Joint Administrative Academic Council meeting. Item eight point three now lists the upcoming agenda items for the next Policy Committee meeting on October the fourteenth. So please take a look at that. Hopefully, if you have any questions or concerns prior to, please reach out to all of us via email. Um, item nine, miscellaneous information. There is no miscellaneous information this evening. Item ten, correspondence. There was none submitted. Item eleven, in camera. There is no in-camera agenda this evening. So we move on to item twelve, which is the motion to excuse absent committee members. Uh, we do not have any committee members that are absent this evening. And then we go to item number thirteen, which is adjournment, closing prayer. May I please have a motion to adjourn? Looking for a movement. Trustee Saunders, could I get a second, or?
One second.
Oh, Trustee Murphy, reaching your seat. Uh, thank you now. Uh, we will end the meeting with a closing prayer by Trustee Dwork. I just wanted to say welcome to our student trustees. This is really your first official meeting of twenty twenty-five. You did a great job. Well done. Any questions, reach out to any of the trustees around the table. They're experienced now and they understand. So, so one good job, okay? Uh, Trustee Dwork, over to you for closing prayer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Please join me in the sign of blessing, sun and spirit. Heavenly Father, we thank you for gathering us together in service of our Catholic district school board schools. As we begin this new year, bless the work our hands guide the decisions we have made here today. May everything we do reflect your wisdom, compassion, and truth. Grant us the grace to support our HCDSP students, families, and staff with love, always keeping Christ at the center of our mission. Strengthen us to be faithful stewards of Catholic education and to witness the gospel in all that we do. We ask this to Christ our Lord.
Amen. Allison, have a good evening. Remember, behind to one another.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair.